Welcome to the May Board of Education meeting. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
At the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I would entertain a motion for the agenda.
Motion.
Thank you, Mr. Harn. Second, thank you, Mr. Quinn. All in favor, show of hands? Thank you, citizens' participation and statement as Bird Board Policy BDDH.
Thank you, Madam President. The district has not received any requests for citizens' participation per Board Policy BDDH.
All right, citizens' update. Military liaison, Mrs. Plummer.
Thank you, Madam President. Fort Leonard Wood wants to extend a special thank you to all of the amazing support from Waynesville School District we received during the month of the Military Child. We truly appreciate your support of our military children and the continued support of All Things Purple last month. Few fun activities that are coming up for Fort Leonard Wood. We have the Kids Bowl Free through Darty Bowling Centers Wednesday through Saturday. Students get two free games through August. June 8th is the Kids Catfish Derby, 9 to 11, at TA 228 Pond. It is free and open to the public. June 10th through August 3rd is a summer reading program with the Bruce C. Clark Library. Register online or at the library to participate. For all students eligible to participate in sports at Fort Leonard Wood, U Sports is offering mini-camps that will include cooking, individual sports, basketball, and group fitness. A different program will take place each week during the month of June. Cost is $30 per camp. You can register with Parent Outreach Services. Lastly, the Auto Skill Center is hosting a diecast shootout. $2 for non-stock cars, $1 for the children's stock class. Registration is happening through the month of May. Competitions will take place in June with the finals taking place at the Fourth of July Car Show. Call the Auto Skill Center for more information.
Sounds like a great summer. Thank you. Mrs. Bales, district announcements.
Thank you, Madam President. Welcome to East Elementary staff. We look forward to hearing more about you during Spotlight on Education. And we have a full crowd here tonight. For those of you at home, we have lots of student recognitions this evening, which is a great problem to have. So I look forward to celebrating our students here in just a moment. The last day of school for our students in kindergarten through 11th grades will be Friday, May 24th. Free sports physicals for WHS and WMS middle school students will be held May 28th, 29th from 1:15 to 4 o'clock PM at the COMC Clinic at East Elementary. Appointments are not required. May and July screenings for preschool children ages three and four who live in the Waynesville R6 School District are now being scheduled at Williams Early Childhood. To schedule a screening appointment, please call 573-842-2650. And appointment dates are available for May 28th or 29th, or July 29th, 30th, or 31st. Students must be ages three or four by August 1st, 2024 to qualify for screening. Students who have already been screened and are on a waiting list do not need to be rescreened. Summer school will be held May 30th through June 27th. District offices will be closed next Monday, May 27th, in observance of Memorial Day. And there will be no school or summer school on June 19th in observance of Juneteenth. Thank you.
All right, next item, consent agenda. I'd entertain a motion to approve. Thank you, Mr. Pondrum. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Lurcher. All in favor, show of hands? Motion passes. All right, the reason so many people are here are student recognitions.
All right, thank you. The Honor Council Committee of the Missouri Association of Students Council has announced that Waynesville Middle School Student Council has been awarded the Missouri Association of Student Council's Honor Council Gold Award. Awards were presented at the 2024 MASC State Convention held in Carthage High School. Waynesville Middle School Student Council was recognized for its involvement at the local level, involvement in the South Central District Student Council, and involvement at the state level. Only 58 student councils in the state of Missouri met the criteria for this award. So here with us tonight to recognize these amazing students are Cassandra Hayes, president. Come on up, Cassie. Brooklyn Stevens, vice president. Everly Beal. Madeline Bennett. Andrea Boda. Akayla Calhoun. Paige Johnson. Kinsley Jones. Evelyn Kelly. Cecilia Perez. Caitlin Zamiska. Let's please give our middle school students one more round of applause.
Wonderful job. Art at the Capitol, Dr. Atkins.
Thank you, Madam President. As Mrs. Bales said, we have quite a few awards to hand out tonight. So we are so very proud of our students. I do want to say that in some of the upcoming award categories, there's quite a few seniors. And as many of you know, graduation was Friday night, so I'm not sure all the seniors made it back, but we will have some of them here. So if it seems like there's some students missing, that is part of the reason. We are going to start with art at the Capitol. And we had a variety of awards. First of all, we had the 2024 Missouri Governor's Mansion Award. Missouri's first lady, Teresa Parson, has selected a Waynesville High School student's artwork for the Governor's Mansion Award. The painting created by sophomore Brianna Brown Myrick will hang in the Governor's Mansion until March of 2025. Is Brianna here? Next, we have the Missouri Senate Exhibit Gallery. Avery Walker's artwork was one of 34 chosen across the state for the Senate Exhibit Gallery. Senator Brown chose Avery's work to represent our Senate District, and her work will be on display from April 2024 through March of 2025. Avery Walker. And next, we have some Freedom Elementary students to recognize. Several students were recognized at the Youth Art Month Ceremony at the Capitol that was held in March. And their artwork was on display of the rotunda during March and early April. We would like to recognize Cove Cornforth. Ezekiel Tecker. Amira Martinez. Emma Kotrell. Isabella Munoz. Xander Clopton. Emma Loffgren. I think Emma's here. We have students coming from way out in the back and in the hallway. We have so many here tonight. And McKenna Kane.
Wonderful job. Congratulations, students, and thank you for representing Waynesville at our Capitol. All right, the Missouri State Thesbian Conference.
Waynesville High School Theater Troop, 1669 students placed in every event that they entered at the Missouri State Thesbian Conference that was held in Kansas City. And Micah Humphrey, a junior, has also qualified to compete at the international level. The theater troupe is sponsored by Mrs. Butler. First, I would like to call up Micah Humphrey. And again, Micah has qualified for the international qualifier in costume construction. Viola Simram, superior rating in music solo. Haley Sansom, superior rating in makeup design. Josie Andrezen, superior rating in makeup design. Haley Carter, superior rating makeup design. Leila Torres, superior rating makeup design. Alexandra Kelly, excellent rating scenic design. Haley Underwood, excellent rating lighting design. Cadence Hi, excellent rating sound design. Erin Charbonneire, excellent rating acting duet. Leila Clark, excellent rating acting duet. Talia Johnson, excellent rating acting solo. Carly Nardone, good rating acting group. Sage Lloyd, good rating acting group. Teagan Duke, good rating acting group. Maddie Waugh, good rating acting group. A.J. Bowling, good rating music duet. And Dani Hill, good rating music duet.
While we're waiting on the students to get their picture, staff that worked with this group, could you please stand to be recognized? What an extraordinary job. Thank you.
Many of them I recognize from the Spring Musical Newsies that were either in the play or working behind the scenes. And boy, that was incredible. I know Mr. Harrison and I attended the same night, and I think Mrs. Rao was there as well. But several of us were there and really enjoyed that performance.
Going to say, if you didn't go, you missed a great show. All right, 2024 DECA International Career Development Conference. Dr. Atkins?
Four Waynesville Career Center students qualified to participate in the 2024 DECA International Career Development Conference that was recently held in Anaheim, California. The DECA Club is sponsored by Mrs. Peggy Arnold. In Principles of Management and Administration, Connor Long. In Entrepreneurship, we had Ian Madden. In School-Based Enterprise, Amelia Vega. And in School-Based Enterprise, Cameron Wilson. Congratulations to our DECA International students.
I will say, I have an opportunity to work with some of these kids, and they are amazing at what they do. So kind of not surprised they made it, but super proud of them. All right, State Band and Choir, Dr. Atkins.
Okay, we have quite a few students to recognize in State Band and Choir. A number of students earned gold ratings at districts and were eligible to compete at the Misha State Solo and Ensemble Festival that was held at the University of Missouri Columbia Campus on April 25th. The band is under the direction of Mr. Jared Sabatasso, and the choir is under the direction of Mrs. Sydney Gilmore. We are going to start with the band results, followed by our choir results. With a gold rating, we had Landon Boswell, tuba solo. Mackenzie Colgan, gold rating clarinet solo. Nicholas Murray, gold rating trombone solo. Jade Anderson, gold rating saxophone quartet. And Mackenzie Colgan, gold rating for saxophone quartet. Yediel Santana Horta, saxophone quartet. Seth Stuke, saxophone quartet. Cassandra Plummer, gold rating clarinet solo. Yediel Santana Horta, gold rating saxophone solo. Seth Stuke, saxophone solo. Connor Long, silver rating trumpet solo. Juliet Piper, silver rating trumpet solo. Olivia Seibert, silver rating flute solo. Kayden Wass, silver rating trombone solo. Dylan Leegy, bronze rating trumpet solo. Congratulations to our band members. And next, we will have our choir members. We have, and I'm going to try it a little bit. Some of them have two certificates. Blaze Moynahan, gold rating for his solo, and then silver rating for SATB quartet. Andrew Limberg, silver rating SATB quartet, and silver rating on solo. Sutlani Arzabala, gold rating for solo and silver rating for quartet. Rachel Scobie, silver rating for solo. Talia Johnson, silver rating on solo. Viola Simram, silver rating for solo and silver rating for quartet.
All right, FFA State Convention, Dr. Atkins.
Waynesville Career Center students competed in the State FFA Convention in April. FFA is sponsored by Miss Emily Coke. We have James Loughlin, state finalist in equine placement. Sienna Zuber, state finalist vegetable operations. Jaden Claire, second place nursery operations. Mia Johnson, fourth place veterinary science. Lancy Shuby, fourth place veterinary science. Jaden Claire, fourth place veterinary science. Jaden Clare, fourth place veterinary science. Sienna Zuber, fourth place veterinary science. And we had two students earn their FFA degrees, Mia Johnson and Jaden Gold.
All right, Skills USA, Dr. Atkins?
Thank you, Madam President. And I'm gonna get some help with this one to read these names. Waynesville Career Center students participated in the Missouri Skills USA State Leadership and Skills Conference that was held in April. Thirteen students earned gold and will compete at the Skills USA National Leadership and Skills Conference in Atlanta, Georgia in June. Mr. Callis, the Waynesville Career Center Director, is gonna help me out with reading names.
All right, and just to give you an idea, all of these had to win state, they're all state champions in their division, just to put that kind of perspective. Jenna Matlock, Skills USA National Qualifier Barbering. Sinaja Hightower, Skills USA National Qualifier Cosmetology. Chevelle Becker, Skills USA National Qualifier Aesthetics. Haley Underwood, Skills USA 2024 National Qualifier First Aid CPR. Anna Lowe, National Qualifier Nail Care. Aaliyah Jones, National Qualifier Pen Design. Alex Holt, National Qualifier Restaurant Services. Dominic Leon, National Qualifier Video News Production. M.J. Luna, National Qualifier Video News Production. Damon Plotner, National Qualifier Video News Production. Riley O'Donnell, National Qualifier Video News Production. Ava Fagan, National Qualifier Video Production. I know he's here.
Now, J R O T C Rocky Mountain Drill Nationals, Dr. Atkins?
The J R O T C Drill Team traveled to Denver, Colorado, April 17th through 21st to compete in the U.S. Army Cadet Command Rocky Mountain Drill Nationals. Our team finished third overall out of 50 teams and Colonel Williams is going to come
Jennifer Boyd. Emily Totten.
Parents, we'll give you a minute to come on up and get your photos. You don't have to rush. Go ahead. I'd also like to take a moment to thank all the seniors that came back tonight to be recognized. There were several and it's their first day off and here they are being recognized at a board meeting, so I wanted to tell them I appreciate that.
I think we've heard quite the gambit of activities, but it is amazing and thank you for everyone that came to support these students. One more round of applause. Spotlight on Education is East Elementary.
Thank you, Madam President and members of the board. At this time, I would like to turn over to Ms. Sarah Harmon. She is our facilitator for the climate team and she's gonna recognize our certified and our classified staff.
Good evening, Madam President and members of the board. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to celebrate our amazing staff at East. For our classified staff, we would like to recognize our SORO Officer Nick Lopez. Officer Lopez has an unwavering willingness to lend a hand whenever it is needed, whether it's guiding students through challenging situations, assisting educators in maintaining a safe and conducive learning environment, or collaborating with parents to address concerns. Officer Lopez stands ready with a helping hand. His dedication extends beyond the call of duty, demonstrating a profound commitment to the well-being and success of every individual within our school community. Some of the students had to say this about Officer Lopez. He is here to keep us safe. Officer Lopez is good at his job and keeps our school safe. I think he is nice and wonderful and he protects our kids wonderfully. Officer Lopez, thank you. Our certified staff member that we would like to recognize tonight is one of our Title One Reading Teachers, Mrs. Pamela Mendez. Mrs. Mendez is an integral part of our East family, surpassing expectations as a reading specialist by tirelessly supporting both students and teachers. Her willingness to assist anyone in need without seeking recognition exemplifies her selflessness. Dependable and steadfast, Pam is a reliable team member consistently demonstrating creativity and a positive attitude. She is a go-to resource for all matters concerning reading and literacy. We are truly fortunate to have her among us. Some of her students have this to say. Ms. Mendez, she's pretty nice. Thank you for teaching me magic E. I love her. I like doing centers with Mrs. Mendez. And I will miss her when I go to a different school. She teaches that E makes A say its name. Thank you, Ms. Mendez.
Thank you, Ms. Harmon. At this time, it is my great pleasure and I am excited to recognize our outstanding kindergarten team tonight for our PLC Team Focus and the exceptional achievements that they have done and, sorry, whoo, exceptional achievements that they have honored us with this year. This dedicated group of educators embraced the use of UFLI and Hagerty phonemic awareness curriculum with remarkable results. Here are some highlights of their accomplishments. For blending letter sounds, our kindergarten students improved from 21.58% to an impressive 88.15% proficiency. On phonemic awareness, their proficiency soared from 5.8% to 89.63, demonstrating substantial growth. In mathematics, for reading and writing numbers zero to 20, the team increased student proficiency from 14.60% on their pre-test to 88.15 on the post. And in mathematics, they did subtract within 10, proficiency climbed from 11.76 on the pre-test to 86.67. These achievements reflect the team's dedication, innovative teaching methods, and commitment to our students' success. We are incredibly proud of our kindergarten team and the hard work that they have done throughout this school year.
Thank you, Mrs. Childs in East Elementary. Next up is Staff Recognition, fourth quarter Project Teach Award. Dr. Go forth.
Thank you, Madam President. Tonight, I would like to recognize Ms. Laura Taylor from Thayer Elementary as the fourth quarter Project Teach recipient. Her classroom project, More Yukes, More Fun, is an outstanding way to foster student engagement,
And our May Transportation Employee of the Month, Mr. Tronstad?
Thank you, Madam President. And Mr. Tronstad couldn't be with us tonight due unforeseen circumstances, so I hope I can do this justice tonight. So with that being said, our May Transportation Employee of the Month is Ms. Christine Pegel. Is she here? Come on up. So we have been blessed to have had Christine with us since 2014 and whenever I asked Transportation to tell me some of the great things about Christine, here's what they said. Christine came to us with eight years of experience working with children ages three through five and it definitely shows when she is on the bus with her kiddos from early childhood. Christine also works with our special needs kiddos and does a fantastic job with that as well. If that'll, if all that wasn't enough, she also helps to train other aides when they come onboard. Christine has perfect attendance and is always willing to help out. So with all that being said, Christine, we thank you very much for all that you do and it's my honor and pleasure to present this to you, the Honor of the Transportation of the Month.
Community Recognitions, Mrs. Bales?
Thank you, Madam President. Tonight really is bittersweet for us as we recognize two of our biggest supporters in the community, Gary Canans and Marv Luton, who faithfully served at our local radio stations, K F B D, K J P W, and K O Z Q for more than 40 years. Their unwavering commitment to serve our community, particularly our students and sports enthusiasts, has not only informed us and entertained us, but has also strengthened the bonds within our community. Gary, yours has been a guiding voice filling the airwaves with local news. We owe you a debt of gratitude to you for your diligence, excellence, and journalistic integrity. You turned our weekly educator shows into programs that not only touched our community but also resulted in several broadcasting awards for your efforts. Marv, your name has become synonymous with sports broadcasting in our community. Through the years, there were so many late nights and yet your voice would still ring out first thing the next morning. Thank you for providing a platform for young athletes to shine and for being an integral part of our community's sports culture. I want to thank you both for your coverage, inspiration, and encouragement for our students, teachers, staffs, and administrators. You have made a profound difference in the lives of many. On behalf of Waynesville R6 School District, I want to present you each with an official district coin, making Marv and Gary only the 30th and 31st people in history to receive this district honor. Please come up, gentlemen.
A legacy, for sure. Thank you. Next up, we have Community Recognition with Dr. Go forth.
Thank you, Mrs. President. This month, the district would like to recognize AUSA for their continued support of the district. They most recently volunteered with Snack in a Pack, packing over 500 bags for students in the Waynesville School District. We appreciate their continued support. If you are representing AUSA, would you please come forward?
Up next, we have Discussion Items. First, 2024-2025 Transportation Handbook. Dr. Go forth.
Thank you, Mrs. President. The proposed 2024-2025 Transportation Handbook is presented for the board's review as a first reading.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Next up, we have Policy IKFA Early Graduation Requirements. Dr. Atkins.
Thank you, Madam President. Policy IKFA Early Graduation Requirements is being brought as a first reading and will be brought for approval at the June 24, the June 2024 Board of Education meeting.
Any questions or comments? Capital Projects Update. Mr. Harrison.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll kind of go through here and tonight, we're going to show some capital projects that we're currently considering for the upcoming school year. So this is not the final list, but there's still more discussions to have and more things to work through, but I just kind of wanted to show you, go through and review some, some projects that we currently have on the list at this point. So before I jump too much into the presentation here, I don't think the clicker's working. Could you go to the next slide, please? So first of all, before we, before I jump into the list of the capital projects, I just want, I know Ms. Bales has already publicly thanked our community and everyone who went out and voted and approved a proposition, too. I just want to take the opportunity tonight to reiterate that, how much we appreciate that. None of these capital projects would be possible without that $8.5 million of federal funding that continues to come in as a result of Prop 2 passing. So I just want to publicly thank the community, take the opportunity to do that tonight as I go through the capital project list. Okay, the first project coming up here, and so we are looking at building an elementary school out on T Highway, and so this kind of shows the property out there. It's right past the waypoint, United Church, United Methodist Church. That kind of shows somewhat of the layout. We're currently still working with architects on what that school would look like to get the final layout, but this kind of shows how that would sit up on the property and kind of how the entrances would go in. We did recently purchase that additional piece of property from Waypoint Methodist Church that, as you can see, gives us a lot more road frontage and the ability to, to adjust the traffic flow, separate parent traffic and bus traffic coming in, and sets us up a lot more, a lot better for success, to be able to handle the traffic flow that would come in and out of T Highway there. And as I said, that, that project is currently kind of in design mode, and we'll have a lot more discussion coming up on that project as well. The sixth grade center entrance expansion, whenever you go down to the entrance to the sixth grade center, you go around that corner, then you come right up to the building, and it becomes pretty congested right there. The, the entranceway is narrow, there's a, there's a 90-degree corner right there, and what that causes a lot of times, especially in morning, morning drop-off and AM afternoon pickup, is it causes some traffic flow issues. And so it's kind of one way in, one way out. And so I've been working with some engineers to kind of come up with some ideas on how we could resolve that issue. And so I believe we have a pretty good plan here in this potential project. And what that does is basically come down there, when you're around the corner, it expands the entire driveway heading towards sixth grade center. And then we're, we would also look at building an additional parking lot on the other side of that little diversion ditch that sits there over in that grassy area. That would allow us, as you see the blue traffic coming in, to loop the traffic around multiple times. And then it would also give us the ability, with the red traffic going out, to bring that traffic around and separate it from the traffic coming in. So we believe this is a very good, you know, potential fix to that problem, and so that's, this is another, another one of the projects we're considering as well. WHS Emergency Exit. This is a project we've been looking at for a while, trying to get a, another way out of the high school, which has been a problem ever since, you know, we built the high school back in, I believe, 2003. It's kind of one way in, one way out, and so we've always looked for a solution to this. There is currently a project potentially on the docket coming down that's, it's attached with MoDOT, and so there's priority lists and things that have to happen. We still don't know for sure when that project is going to happen, so we continue to look at solutions on, on being able to do that. Currently working with engineers to do a feasibility study on this. Basically, it would link the Career Center parking lot with the high school parking lot and allow the, the bus traffic flow and deliveries and things of that nature to come in through the Career Center parking lot, go straight into the high school parking lot, and would help to separate some of the traffic coming in and out of there. And then it would give us a road that would, that would go right up from the backside of the, the Career Center and like back, that kind of that northwest corner up there, and go up that hill, and then go down and connect with, with Mitchell Heights. There are some obstacles with this, with project, and so, like I said, we do have some engineers that are currently kind of doing some analysis on that to look at the feasibility of the grade of, you know, and what excavating would have to be done. And also, there's some utility lines there that we're currently looking at to do some analysis, determine if those lines are too low to be able to get traffic in and out of there, and potentially what we could do to remedy that if that was the case. So more to come on that project. We're current, like, we're currently doing a feasibility study, and, and I will update everyone as I have more information on that. Administration Building Renovation. So currently, the administration building, it's a very beautiful building that's been with the district a very long time. It was, it used to be an elementary school. It currently has structural issues that we're looking to address. We had some structural engineers come in and do some analysis on it. They walked around. I'm still awaiting that report. There is some issues up in the roof with some, with some, basically some of the infrastructure on the roof and the, in the foundation has some issues that we're looking, you know, what would it cost to address that? And then also, the, the, the systems in the building, the HVAC system is really old and outdated. The electric in there, we're really maxed out on what we can add from a capacity standpoint. And then also, you know, just the plumbing system in general, just all the systems related to that building are just kind of old and need updated. And then also, you know, as part of this, if this was, if we moved forward with this project, we would look to better align the space within the building with our current administrative structure to, you know, open up offices and things like that that would better suit our needs. And then also, we would look to add additional training and conference space, which is in high demand right now. We're always fighting for extra conference rooms and places to do trainings and things of that nature. So we're looking, that's one of the aspects of this project as well. And then finally, another, you know, thing that we take in consideration is maintaining the historical value of the building and keeping the historical value intact as well. So, next slide, please. Middle School Football Field Turf. This, the middle school football field, the turf is highly worn. It's, it's in great need of being replaced. We, it has a high community use. We, our youth football teams, if you drive by the middle school almost any time of the week, any time of the day, you're going to see kids out there playing, which is what we want to see. But with that comes a lot of wear and tear, so it is time for that field to be replaced. And we currently have that project on the docket coming up for this summer, so. Some, some other things, HVAC system upgrades. We do have three buildings that have old, kind of antiquated HVAC systems in them, and we are currently, you know, whenever you're updating an HVAC system, there's a lot of things to take into consideration. So we're definitely kind of looking at that from every angle. Some of the things that we're currently, that we're currently analyzing, and we're working with engineers on this as well, they're currently working on six different options for me, for those three buildings. And some of the things we're taking in consideration as we analyze that. Number one, the installation costs for, for the different options. What, what is it going to cost to come in and update the system? Number two, you know, whenever your school, whenever your school building, you can't really bring this, bring an entire school building down for an entire year while you're updating the HVAC system in there. So, you know, likely, especially with the high school, you know, we would need to come in around the end of May, and then have that thing up and running and functional by the first week or two of August. And so, so that's another factor that we're looking at when we're analyzing all of this. And then also compatibility with the existing infrastructure. When, so you, when you look at the ductwork and the electric and the plumbing and all that kind of stuff, we need a system that's going to come in and, and not require a complete overhaul of the, the infrastructure within the building. Then also efficiency, you know, we want a system that's going to come in and be able to get some back, some of our turn investment on back, on that back where we start realizing savings in our utility bills. So that, those are the three, those three buildings we are looking at very soon, coming up with the best option to replace those HVAC systems. So I'll, I'll be having more discussions and bringing you more information on that as well as the engineers bring back those options. Next slide, please. HVAC, and also from an HVAC control standpoint, we've been working with Controlco over the last few years to put in newer, modern control systems. Most of our HVAC system didn't even have computerized control systems in them. So they've, they have done every building to this point except for the middle school, sixth grade center, and the early childhood building. And so that, this picture here just kind of shows you a snapshot of, of what that does for us. It brings all the different components of the HVAC system into a computer program, lets us monitor and analyze that. It also builds in alarms and notifications, so as certain components start to go out, Mr. Pritchard and, and the Controlco and some of the maintenance staff start getting, you know, phone calls and notifications, and it allows us to catch a lot of things before they come, big problems. And it also kind of helps out with monitoring the whole system. It gives us a higher level of control, and it also gives us a higher level of efficiency because we can go in and schedule the HVAC system to run. So whenever there's, there's low occupancy in the building overnight, we can bring the, the temperature up or down as needed and adjust, and then kind of set it to where it knows when to come back on in the morning to get it, the building where it needs to be whenever the students come back in. So we did this, East Elementary was one of the first buildings we did this in, and I, we started measuring the utility bills after that, just to kind of get an idea, and we realized about a 13% savings in our utility bills just from the scheduling part of that alone right off the bat. So do feel like it's a, you know, it's been a good investment and a good project, and so we do have three buildings left. And another cool thing about this is it allows us to bring all buildings into one pane of glass, where we're monitoring everything from one portal, and we can see it all at once. So that's another project that we're looking at for those three buildings, is to bring them online as well. Lot of asphalt projects looking to do this, this summer, or this year, throughout this year. So we have Slaughter, the Slaughter Field Lot, the Career Center Parking, the Center Parking Lot, Career Center Transportation Entrance, East Elementary Road to the baseball field, Partridge Front Circle Drive. Next slide, please. Partridge Entrance, the Partridge Main Lot, Early Career Center, or, I'm sorry, Early Childhood Lot, the Thayer Front Visitor Lot, Thayer Circle Drive Lot, Inside Lot, and then the, the Freedom Lot as well. So those are all parking lot that we're looking to, to go in and fix and patch and, and as needed this, this year. Next slide, please. And then Roof Repair, you know, both that, our asphalt and our roof projects, we, we kind of look out at a five to 10-year timeframe, and we want to know ahead of time what's coming down the pike. So coming up for this, for this year, the Career Center is, is one that's been identified as kind of a high need of going in and, and replacing that roof. So we are looking to, to bid that project out and get that in the works as well this year. And then just some other kind of miscellaneous things coming up for FY25 potentially. Middle School Cafeteria modifications. So the, you know, the middle school cafeteria is fairly small compared to the number of students they try to run through, through there throughout the day. And so talking with Mr. Vernon, you know, I'm trying to kind of identify some additional spaces that we could potentially use in there. And so we've identified some storage spaces within there that we could potentially come in and, and expand the size of the interior of that cafeteria and make more room for, to get students in and out of there. The High School Gym Sound System, we've had issues with that ongoing for the last few years, so we're looking at upgrading that this year. The Auditorium, the, in the, in the high school, there hasn't been a whole lot done on that since the time the building was built, and it's really time to kind of come in and, and kind of upgrade some of the things in there and get it up to where it needs to be. And then beyond that, just some miscellaneous building, summer projects that we're currently working, the building is on mostly flooring and things of that nature. And then kind of looking down the pike, we are in, in a, in a list of, of schools that could get funding coming down the pike. So it's through PSMI, which is through military, through the Department of Defense, they put all military schools on a list. Pick Elementary is number 76 on the list, and they're currently down on number 72 of schools that have been committed for allocation of funding. So it's all, it depends on how much fund is allocated over the next couple of years to that pool of, pool of money. So they haven't, we, whenever Ms. Bales and I went to the last NAFIS Conference, we pulled Mr. Kennedy off to the side, who's the one that oversees this program, and he wasn't able to give me a whole lot of foresight on it, but other than just to kind of be ready to go whenever it does show up. So, and that's an 80/20 match. So whenever we do come up on the docket, we'll be able to rebuild Pick Elementary and provide 20% of the funding for that. So, so it's a great deal and something we're looking forward to whenever the funding does come down for that.
Mr. Harrison, I'd just like to add, too. So once Pick Elementary is renovated, we would then look at making a plan to put some of our elementaries in there temporarily while we renovate some of our elementary buildings on post, once Pick would be ready. So for instance, if it was Thayer's turn, we might put Thayer there for a little while while we renovate and upgrade Thayer, and so on and so forth. So I just wanted to communicate that to the public while Mr. Harrison mentioned it just now.
Thank you, ma'am. And that's the last slide that I have. Like I said, we're still in kind of discussion mode and reviewing all of this, but if, I'd be happy to entertain any questions right now.
Certainly a lot to digest. Any questions or comments? All right. Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Next up, we have Job Descriptions, first read. Dr. Go forth.
Thank you, Mrs. President. The following job descriptions are presented for your review as a first reading. 4.07.1 Transportation Director's Secretary, 4.07.1B Transportation Secretary.
Any questions or comments? All right. Thank you, Dr. Go forth. Next up, we have the High School AP Textbook Proposals. Dr. Atkins.
Thank you, Madam President. Attached for review are proposals for Advanced Placement U.S. History Textbooks and Advanced Placement Environmental Science Textbooks, which would align with the updated Advanced Placement Standards in those two courses, and this will be brought for approval at our June Board Meeting.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Waynesville Middle School Course Edition. Dr. Atkins.
Thank you, Madam President. The attached course editions are brought for review and will be brought for approval at the June 2024 Board Meeting. The additions reflect two new project Lead the Way courses for the middle school.
They do sound kind of neat. Any questions or comments? All right. Under Action, we have Job Description, second read. Dr. Go forth.
Thank you, Mrs. President. The following job description is presented for approval as a second reading. 2.13.2 Secondary Associate Principal. Administration requests approval as presented.
Any questions or comments? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve. Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Do I have a second? Mr. Quinn, thank you. All in favor, show of hands? Thank you. High School Math Textbooks. Dr. Atkins.
Thank you, Madam President. Teacher teams reviewed textbook materials from multiple vendors and provided feedback during the textbook selection process. The recommendation for high school Algebra I, Algebra II, Geometry, and Bluman Statistics are from McGraw-Hill. This would allow for six years of online access and six years of access to the Alex system that goes along with this, as well as teacher manuals and classroom resource sets. And Administration requests approval as presented.
There are no other questions or comments. I would entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Thank you, Mr. Harn, second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Pondrum. All in favor, show of hands? Motion passes. Proposed Policy and Procedure Revisions, second read. Mrs. Bales.
Thank you, Madam President. Make a motion to approve the policies and procedure revisions as presented.
If there are no questions or comments, I would entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Keeling. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Lurcher. All in favor, show of hands? Motion passes. And 2024-2025 Career Ladder Plan. Dr. Atkins.
Thank you, Madam President. The 2024-2025 Career Ladder Plan is attached for review and approval. Per DUSCY guidelines, this is brought, needs to be brought for approval each year, so this is just updating it and getting your approval for this upcoming school year.
Any questions or comments for Dr. Atkins? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve. We're going to have to arm Russell for first. Mr. Keeling, we'll give you the first. Mr. Quinn, will you take the second? Perfect. All in favor, show of hands? And with that, we have finished our business. I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Mr. Quinn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Harn. All in favor, show of hands? Everyone, have a great evening. Thank you.